Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Solvang City Council meeting for November 24, 2025. We are starting at 6:30 in the evening. Just a little housekeeping. Please make sure your phones are just silent and we'll proceed. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante?
Here.
Mayor Protem Claudia Rona?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Lirona?
Here.
Mayor Brown?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance is Mike Decker with the Santa Barbara SCAG.
Mayor Brown, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mike. Now, what service were you in? You're a veteran.
I was in the Navy.
Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Okay. We have one proclamation for this evening. This is, uh... We are city proclamation honoring Father Peter Mary Banks Capuchin on the occasion of his 80th birthday. Whereas Father Peter Mary Banks Capuchin has been a beloved spiritual presence, has been a beloved spiritual presence in our community faithfully celebrating Mass every Wednesday at Old Mission San Ynez and bringing comfort and joy to seniors at Attodag Village and Friendship House. And whereas Father Peter has dedicated his summer since 2009 to ministering at Circle V Ranch Camp off Highway 154, providing what he calls Six Days of Heaven to underprivileged children, offering them love, care, and a message that they will never be rejected by God. And whereas Father Peter served as guardian of San Lorenzo Seminary in San Ynez in 1983 and welcomed Alcoholics Anonymous groups seeking a place of peace and healing, establishing retreats that ran from 1983 through 2011, where many found their way back to the church. And whereas Father Peter, born and raised in Sligo, Ireland, as one of 13 children, has served with unwavering dedication to the poor throughout his priesthood, including nine years at St. Lawrence of Bristi Catholic Church in Watts, neighborhood of Los Angeles, and was called back to San Lorenzo in 2009 to handle recruitment of young men for the Capuchin Order, continuing his, the seminary traditions as the North American Center for Training of Capuchin Friars. And whereas Father Peter is approaching his 80th birthday and continues to minister tirelessly embodying the Franciscan spirit of service while bringing his Irish brogue, quick wit, and boundless energy to all he serves. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor David Brown, along with the City of, City Council of the City of Solvang, California, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2025, as Father Peter Mary Banks' Day in celebration of his 80th birthday and encourage all people in the, in our city to recognize and honor his extraordinary contributions of faith, compassion, and service to our community. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal, official seal of the City of Solvang, California to be affixed this 24th day of November, 2025. Congratulations to Father Peter on his 80th birthday. And I don't think he's here today. On the 30th, he'll be celebrating at San Ynez Mission. And there's a, be a reception and I plan to be there and read this to him at that point. And he brags about his middle name being Mary. So, you know, it's like Johnny Cash, a boy named Sue, but that's okay. It, it works for him and, and he's proud of it. So he's, if you've never met him, it's quite an opportunity. If you, it takes a while to understand him because he's, he has Irish brogue that is phenomenal. But what a wonderful man. So congratulations to Father Peter. Next, we have presentations by the library year in review.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have some representatives from our, it's easy for me to say, Solvang Library. They're going to provide a year in review. As you recall, we introduced Joanne and Elizabeth and Erin not too long ago. And she committed, or they committed to providing an update. So that's why they're here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Joanne Plummer. I'm the Neighborhood Services Director for the City of Goleta. And a few months ago, when we were talking about the budget, we promised that we would come back to you and share with you what happened last year at your library. As you're aware, for members of your public, the City of Solvang contracts with the City of Goleta to provide your library services. I brought with me our city librarian, Elizabeth Sosito. She's in the audience, along with your branch supervisor, Erin Herzog. She had started with us in January and has done a phenomenal job for you. So I'm going to go ahead and breeze through your presentation this evening. And then if there's any questions that I can't answer, I have our library gurus here to answer any questions. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our usage and activity, our space enhancements, the collection and maintenance, all ages programming, staffing and updates, fiscal overview, friends of the library, and looking ahead at our current fiscal year. Our usage and activity, your library is open five days a week for approximately 38 service hours. We're closed on Sundays and Mondays. This last year, in 2024, 2025 fiscal year, we had just over 46,000 visitors. We have over 5,000 individuals with library cards. 16, over 16,000 total volumes, 61,000 total circulation units, 140 programs that were attended by over 3,500 participants. We have computers, six of them, that were used for over 1,400 sessions. And you have five staff that operate in that library that equal just under three full-time staff. So all of your staff, with the exception of Ms. Herzog, are part-time staff. They work an average of about 15 hours a week. And Ms. Herzog is the only full-time staff member that you have currently. We have 32 volunteers that worked over 1,000 hours. That averages out to about 20 hours a week. Some volunteers come in about one hour a month, as Ms. Herzog was explaining to me earlier, and some come every day. So it just depends on their availability and what they like to do. As we look to our space enhancement, as you may recall, you are very fortunate to have a consistent branch supervisor for over 20 years here in Solvang. And she announced her retirement about this time last year. And we said goodbye to Carrie McKinnon. And we were fortunate to find Ms. Herzog. And she comes to us with a lot of experience. She came into the library and like we do with any time you have someone new come in, they were able to take a fresh look at something. And she was able to take a fresh look at our space. And everybody here is aware that we have a very small space. And she was able to manipulate our space in a different way and was able to really address some of our Americans with Disability Acts. She looked at our space regarding safety, ergonomics for the staff and for our patrons, and workflow. We were able to digitize some of our archived files and some of our, such as some of our statistics logs. She cleared some of the walkways. We had a lot of blocked walkways. Our, some of our furniture is very thick and heavy, built to last. And so it, it clogged up some of our walkways. We were able to manipulate and move some of the furniture to, we were able to re-align some of the collections so that we could remove some of the circular bookshelves so that we could clear up some of the walkways. And then we, she literally was able to expand the usage for the existing footprint. So as you can see here on the left side of the slide, that was our before pictures. And it's a little congested. If you were in there, you could feel the difference. You walk in now, it's, it's much more fresh and open. She's used every space, every little nook and cranny. And with the Americans with Disabilities Act, we're now more in compliance than we were before. So that light and airy feeling is actually a compliance requirement. So hats off to Ms. Herzog. In addition, we've replaced Windows 7 computers with outdated computers. We have improved cybersecurity. We've done that throughout our, our library cooperative. We have improved our patron satisfaction with our capabilities and our printing. We've upgraded our RFID pads and barcode scanners for efficiencies. We have conducted a safety assessment, assessment on the facility. We had our insurance company come to the facility and do a safety assessment for our patrons regarding if there were a fire or if there was some type of, of like an earthquake or some bad individual that happened to come in and, and try to do bad things. And try, we tried to see what we needed to do in order to make some accommodations for both patrons and the staff. And so we are getting into that. And one of the things we needed to do was we needed to order a new service desk. And at the same time our safety assessment came in, we also received a 20,000 donation from the Sterling Price Living Trust. We were able to use that donation to purchase a modular service desk. The service desk that we have in there right now is actually built in. It has electricity running through it, so it's not an easy remove and replace structure. So we've been working over the past few months to line up contractors that can remove that existing structure and bring in the new one. The new one is sitting right outside the doors in crates, ready to come in. We are in the process of finalizing those contracts and scheduling the work and hoping based on contractor availability in December to have that completed before the new year. So we're very, very excited. That will also include a new book drop and some other enhancements for customer satisfaction. The collection maintenance, again, if you were there before and you're there now, you'll see a lot of improvements. We had some challenges with the shelves on the, on the bookshelves. All of our shelves, a lot of our shelves are wooden and the shelves started to splinter. And so looking at replacing the shelves, they're so thick and sturdy and built in that we were having to look at possibly replacing the entire bookshelves. So we talked with some of our Friends volunteers as well as Erin came up with a great idea. And she actually wrapped the shelves. And by wrapping the shelves, she did it strategically so that she color-coded so that the children can easily find the different books that they're looking for. So you're not only looking for signs, you're also looking for colors so that you can easily find what you're looking for in the library. So when you go into the library, it's very colorful and it's there, it's colored for multiple reasons. One, for safety, you don't have the splintering. Two, we have, you can find your books better. And then you can see the signs, the wayfinding signs are there. So you can see what type of books you're looking for. We've gone through a significant weeding process. Weeding, as I learned, is not the same in the parks definition as it is in the library definition. Weeding in a library is going through and finding all those nasty books that people have turned back in that maybe they spilled their hot chocolate on a few times or the kids may be colored on some pages that we didn't catch when we were turning, when we were checking them back in. And, or they're not being checked out. They're not being read by our patrons. So we run reports in our system. And if they're just not being used, we pull them off the shelves and we bring in new inventory. The ones we pull off the shelves, we give to our friends so they can sell them in, in their book sales, unless they're really nasty and gross, then they are disposed of. But the, the ones that are still good, we do give them to the friends. And so once we go through, we're able to turn over the collection so it's fresh and it's what your patrons want. And it's what they want to see and what they want to check out. We were able, as you see, we shifted some different things for increased visibility. We, we have found in, in all of the libraries that we serve that our holiday collection is not just for holidays. People like to have that feeling year round. Maybe that's why Hallmark's bringing out the, the Christmas Year Round and Christmas in July. But people like to read those books. They like to sit around. They like the ideas of some of them. So we're making them available year round. The wayfinding signs have been so popular that we're actually introducing them in, in a couple of our other libraries. And then the consistent font that is throughout the library, really giving it a branding throughout the space. The all ages programming, again, hats off to Erin and her team. The twice the weekly storytimes, you've seen the space. It's jam-packed. You can see in there, the parents are standing, the kids are seated. They are all crouched in there. We have to move tables and chairs, those big bulky, heavy tables and chairs to make people fit in when it's inclement weather outside. When we're, when, when we're outside, when it's beautiful weather, which is most of the year, they do crowd out there. Our patio is fantastic. The friends were able to purchase us some patio furniture as well as some seating cushions so that they can be outside and sit down and listen to the different stories. We have monthly book clubs. We have new programs like the Fiber Arts Club and, at both Solvang Library and Harry's House. We have seasonal performers for the summer reading program and Danish Days. We have outreach to schools, Harry's House and the Golden Inn and Village. We have book club partnership with the California Nature Art Museum. As I mentioned earlier, we had Ms. Herzog join our team in January. I'm overwhelmed with all of the things she has done. She has been phenomenal. And then we also found Mr. Kyle Calderon, Calderon, I'm sorry, on, in May. And he's been a valuable asset to the team as well. And then our next slide talks a little bit about the fiscal overview. And I know that's one of the ones you love to talk about. The, the fiscal overview, again, this is for 2425. And there are some numbers where we, we had shared with you before what our expectation was for this year. And we had asked for some additional funds based on what our expected numbers would be for 2425. I'm sorry, for 2526. We did share with you, I did share with you that if there were any funds remaining at the end of the year, they would be sent to your fund balance. So you do have a fund balance at that, that is, you can see in, in that second section where it says fund balance as of June 30th. That is, all, all of our numbers are currently in, in the process of our audit. But these are the numbers that were reported for audits. So that money is yours. It is kind of in your, like your secret savings account. So if your money runs short, we can pull from that. But that money, if ever you have a surplus, this is your money. We don't take your money. It goes into your fund balance with us. So there are reasons that you might run into a surplus, such as a time period if you have a staff member that leaves. We don't use all their, all of their allocation for their funds. If we were not able to spend all of our book subscriptions, we didn't, weren't able to buy all of our subscriptions. Or we weren't able to purchase, maybe in this one, you can see, we had to purchase some additional computer hardware. One of the big things for us was other services and supplies. We didn't spend $20,000 for that one. We did carry over $20,000 for the service desk purchase. We carried that over into this year. So we didn't spend 20,000 last year, but we carried it over this year so that we're not hitting this year's budget while we spend the money to hire the contractors for the installation of that service desk. And the reason we had to carry that over is because that safety audit wasn't taking place until the end of June. And before we spent the money to install the new circulation desk, we wanted to make sure that the safety audit was, had taken place. So we'll go ahead and we'll come back to this if you have questions on this. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the Friends of the Library. We actually should talk a lot about the Friends of the Library because you have a phenomenal Friends of the Library group. They are an essential support system to the library. They are, they fund all, all of the summer reading program performers. They are doing regular book sales as a fundraiser. As I mentioned earlier, we give them any books that we pull off the shelves. They are a fantastic volunteer support for us. They have purchased a lot of different things for us this year. I mentioned the patio furniture in the back. They've done storytime cushions and seats. They're really cute. They're like little tree stumps or little leaves. They're adorable. This big, beautiful rug in the middle in the children's area is gorgeous, bright, vibrant, cushiony. The other one was smaller. It had seen a lot of love. It was dingy. It was clean by clean standards, but it looked like it had been loved for a very long time. And they're a huge advocate for us. They, they really talk up the library. They are just a fantastic partner for the library. So we couldn't do what we do without their love and their support. And they're just, they're absolutely phenomenal. And then looking ahead a little bit, we are going to have, as I mentioned, the installation of the new desk. We are installing a new automatic electronic defibrillator in the library. We also, if you've been to the library, we had a really weird door counter. It was, it didn't meet our current standards. So we have purchased a new door counter that will be counting our patrons, I believe, from above. So it will count everybody from above. So we'll be able to actually open both doors. Our existing counter only had one door available to open. So we'll be able to open both doors so people can come in and out with, through both doors. We're very excited about that. And then the book drop community art contest is something I just wanted to share a little bit about with you. One of the things that I learned when I stepped into my role as Neighborhood Services Director and was able and fortunate to take on library services was that people put the darndest things in book drops. In Goleta, we found a toaster. So poor Erin and her team have come across the most amazing things in the book drop. So where our book drop is located at the county building, it's right next to some other, there's a mail, I believe there's a mailbox over there. There's a voting box over there. We get dirty diapers in there. We get trash in there. Whenever there's a large event in Solvang, we get a lot of trash in there. So Erin came up, Erin and her team came up with the idea of doing a book drop community art contest. At one point, we just wanted to see about painting it. And then we thought that let's engage the whole community. Let's try to, to bring the community along and, and see if we, there's an artist that wants to be involved. We talked to the friends about it. And the friends said that they would sponsor this and fund a stipend to pay an artist. So unless you have any objections, we will work with Mr. Murphy and Mr. Castillo to put together some guidelines and we would run a contest. We would invite any of you to serve on the, the group to judge any of the artwork. And then we would ta-da, make a big, beautiful book drop. And the goal could be something like this. One of the ideas that had come about was maybe in all the different languages that we see here in Solvang, maybe we write books in all of those different languages. And so people know it's not trash so that we can kind of share that. But we're working on those guidelines. We have some draft guidelines, but we wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with that before we moved along with that idea. And then before we move to questions, I just, I really wanted to thank you. Thank you, a large thank you to the City Council and to your city administration for thinking and remembering the library while you're planning for the future. We saw one of your previous City Council meetings, you're planning for a future City Hall. And in that discussion, you remember the library. And we were thrilled at the thought and the, the potential of looking to a new library. We are already looking at grants. We're looking at any type of funding opportunities for you for a new library. We're watering the money tree every day. We're looking under every rock we can, we can look for. We'll, we'll do whatever we can do to help, help you in that effort. We're just very excited about that opportunity. As you know, we're, we're busting at the seams. We've done everything we can to maximize the space we're at. And we'll do whatever we can do to serve our public where we're at. But you have a lot of people that love your library. And with some more space, we can do some amazing things. So... So that's all I have for you. We're available for questions, and if you get deep in the woods, I'm going to have to bring in my reserves to answer some questions.
Very well done, Joanne. Any questions? I had a couple of questions. The surplus monies that you talked about, are those restricted funds? Are they for capital or operations? Are they?
Restricted for you, yes.
But I meant, are they restricted for their use?
No, no. So they, if, if, I called Mr. Murphy and said, guess what? You need new computers, and we don't have it in the budget. We can dip into the reserve and buy new computers with his authorization. An example might be, we've already talked about the this year's budget. We also have received word from the county that if their cuts that they have to make are deep enough, we could see a reduction in per capita funding. We won't know that until about February, March next year, but we're already keeping our eye on that because that could impact our 26, 27 budget. So those are times we might want to look to pull some of that money out of that to help with the budget.
What are your operating days and hours?
For Solving? We are closed on Sunday and Monday. As far as the hours... Sorry, there's three libraries. I can't remember all the hours.
That's okay. We're open Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 10 to 7:00. And then, sorry, Tuesdays and Fridays is 10 to 5:00. Wednesday and Thursday is 10 to 7:00, and Saturday is 10 to 4:00.
Okay. And has that been adequate for our residents? Is there a request for different hours?
Not so far.
Okay.
We get a couple of people waiting at the door when we come in.
Okay.
And depending on how we're doing, we might let them in early, but other than that...
Are they there when you, do you have to throw them out too when it's time to close?
No, people are very respectful of everyone going home for dinner.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, you'd mentioned that you have a new defibrillator. And has the staff been trained how to use it?
Yes, we've been training all of our staff. Twice a year, we give them the opportunity to train in CPR, first aid, and AED, and fire extinguisher training.
And your insurance guy thought that was okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you. I have, anybody else? Thank you so much for the updates.
Thank you.
Okay, going next is Public Communications. Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
At this time, you may address the council on items not on the agenda and on consent. Time limit is three minutes. We will start with in-person public comments first.
Okay, I have, this is for agenda, okay. Dennis Beebe, you're on deck. Or you're up. I won't say on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you and the council for your continuing support to our community by your service. I just wanted to call out a couple of folks from staff and compliment them on two events that are veterans-centric. We had Salute the Veterans on the 8th of November, put on by the County Veterans Foundation. And Candace at Parks and Rec was the face of Solvang again. They came back from last year, and they're planning on returning because it was, I think, a very successful event. The second is our normal event, which is Veterans Day, November 11th. And it went smooth as silk, and I thank Jonathan Flynn in particular from Parks, from, excuse me, sorry, from Public Works for arranging to reserve all the parking spaces in front of Vets Hall on mission. And I think we probably violated the boundaries because we brought in a record number of military vehicles. So thank you to Public Works as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that'd like to make a public comment, or anyone on Zoom? Okay, thank you very much. We are closed for Public Communications. We'll go to item four, City Manager's Report and Advanced Calendar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just recap quick of the trash event we had on the 15th, and there were no complaints. So we did a good job communicating. Of course, the head count was down because of the weather, but the local neighbors that had expressed concerns the last time, I haven't heard from any of them, so I assume it went okay. I actually went down there late in the day, and they said there hadn't been more than three or four cars lined up, so it sounds like it went okay. Reminder, we have one council meeting left for the year, which is in two weeks, on December 8th. And before you know it, Christmas and New Year's will be here, so we'll be looking forward to that. Next agenda, we'll have the calendar for next year, the council schedule for next year. And we intend to, again, suggest and recommend to council that there is no second meeting in July or August, like we did this year. It seemed to work reasonably well, so no reason to change that. A reminder also about our city grant program. We will be releasing information about that. That new deadline, or the new program will move up. The old program will move up to a new time about a month earlier than it historically has been to help accommodate, trying to move the budget process up a little bit. And I also have a reminder for the council as well as the public, and we will have a council goal-setting session on February 7th, so the day before the Super Bowl here in Solvang at a location to be determined. We anticipate it starting about 10:00 a.m. and going for four or five hours. And lastly, just a reminder to council, if anybody's interested, we have our Christmas parade. We have a tree lighting on the 5th at 5:30, I believe. It starts, tree lighting actually to occur at 6:30. And then on the following Saturday at 11:00 a.m. is the actual parade. We are working with our transit provider, RATPD Dev. They're providing a bus that will allow council to ride on. So if you're interested, let me know, and we can have you sign the hold harmless agreement that they require. Well, actually, we require, but they have to get their riders to fill it out. So as far as upcoming meetings, like I said, we'll have some discussion about next year's council meetings at the next meeting as well as a reorg. There'll be a new Mayor Pro Tem next year, following Paz Practice. Had some other information, and working on getting a marketing update at the second meeting in January for the entire year. And sheriff report, basically 2025 information in the first meeting in February, and looking on getting a fire department report. We have a new fire chief, by the way. Mark Hartwig is retiring, and Garrett Huff has been appointed to replace him. He's been with the county for a while. We all know him, and hoping to get him here and introduce him to council soon. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Wow, you're getting off easy. Not bad. It was just that complete and to the point. Well done. Okay, we'll move to item five. Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
Government Code Section 53232.3D, AKA AB 1234, and Government Code Section 84308, AKA SB 1439, Report Out. Ex parte communications, council comments, requests.
Thank you. Any reports? See, everybody's shaking their head. You haven't done anything in two weeks' time? I'm sure there's something. Okay.
I have one. I have an ex parte, or, sorry, meetings attended. I attended the Eastern Management JPA meeting just last week as a City of Solving representative.
And the GSA meeting.
Any?
Well, I attended the GSA EMA meeting that we held, and that's about it.
Okay, if you'll indulge me, I have a number of things. First of all, I was at the Santa Barbara County Associated Governments Meeting where we have a new chair and vice chair. The new chair is Bob Nelson, and the vice chair is Dave Silla of Bulton. The North County Subregional Meeting was the 12th, and they also have a new leadership. I want, I was at the Veterans Day Celebration on the 11th and presented our proclamation to the post, VFW Post, which is well-received. It was a great, great presentation, and they had some great speakers, so it was well-received and great entertainment by the Valley Jazz Band and the Corral. Did a great job. Went to a workshop for REACH with the city manager on the 14th, discussed housing and employment and other items as it relates to our North County. And also attended a, the Coast Rail, Coast Rail, California Council, CRCC. I should know the name of it. I wrote it down. I just can't read my writing. Council Rail Coast, anyway, the rail facilities for the north central coast. And some of the comments there was they're trying to, well, in the throes of moving some of the bullet train money into more local facilities to enhance that from a federal perspective, not necessarily from the state. The, I was on a Zoom call with the Cal Cities League for council members and mayors, and it was pretty much just kind of a brainstorming meeting as it relates to conditions and things going on. Housing is a big one, as is homelessness for a lot of the different cities. And then I also had the pleasure of sending a, I happened to have Mr. Salud Carvajal's cell number, and I called him to thank him for the million-dollar award that we've gotten from his earmarks. And so that will go to the wastewater treatment plant here. So he was very appreciative to get a thank you call, and I also reached out to his staff and did the same. Then the, the other thing, well, I wanted to do a shout out for public's work. We had some serious rains over the past week or so, and we basically got by unscathed because they had been doing proactive work of cleanups and pulling debris and things of that nature. So we didn't have any flooding, we didn't have any real concerns, which is pretty significant considering all the rain that we got. So a shout out to the Public Works Department and Jonathan and team. And then also, I'm seeing Yule Fest come to life, and I know that's a big deal and a lot of help from Parks and Recreation, so I appreciate that. On another note, I'm going to make a comment as it relates to our neighbor to the west, Lompoc. There's a council member there that has, has given the city kind of a black eye with an indictment. And it's up to us, and I know I'm preaching to the choir and my colleagues, to be above reproach, know that we have a fiduciary responsibility to our stakeholders, our constituents, and our partners. And with that responsibility, it's everybody's here and our staff to be completely transparent and never, never lose the trust. It's too difficult to get back. So with that, and he's, he can have his day in court, and he's innocent until proven guilty, but it's still a black eye to the city and something that they're going to have to overcome. So again, please, like I said, I'm preaching to the choir with the colleagues that are next to me, so I appreciate it. But just a reminder, finally, well, that's it for disclosures. So we'll move on to, any questions or any other things that came up? Okay. We'll move on to item six, Consent. Would you read that for us, please?
Consent is for routine administrative city matters and is approved with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members. Members of the public were afforded an opportunity to speak during the public communications portion of this agenda.
Thank you. Any concerns or motions?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve item six, Consent Items As Is.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval of item six, Consent Items. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Theron.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Move on to item seven, Public Hearings, Staff Report. Why don't you read that into the record for us, please?
Public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance of the City of Solvang to amend Title 10 of the Solving Municipal Code, adopting and amending codes comprising the 2025 California Building Standards Code and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Solvang setting forth findings in support of amendments to the above referenced codes and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Solvang to ratify an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara, adopting and amending the 2025 California Fire Code.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So before you this evening, we, is the second step for the adoption of the 2025 California Building Code. So the California Building Code is adopted every three years, and it's amended by the California Building Standards Commission, which revises the California Building Code. It comprises of various chapters, including plumbing, electrical, fire, mechanical, historical code, green code, et cetera. So the state requires adoption of each and every city and county of this code. Typically, we have folks that come to the counter or ask questions about what is Solvang's building code. Well, it's the state code along with everybody else. Amendments are allowed to the building code if they're justified as adopted by findings, which are included in your staff report. One of the key issues that the State of California has created was AP 130. That was adopted as a part of the budget proceedings this past June, and it actually freezes the residential code adoptions until 2031. So essentially, what you're adopting this evening under the 2025 code will give property owners six years essentially of knowing what's ahead of them in terms of building code and what's required of them to submit for plans. So what's new in the 2025 California Building Code? We are, again, continuing to move from EV and electric ready to sort of mandatory requirements. So this includes requirements for installation of outlets for level-two charging for residential units and non-residential units as well. There is a move to what's called electric-ready buildings. So it's basically supporting the transition from gas to electric, including the requirement for connections for electric water heaters, dryers, et cetera. So while there are some municipalities in California that require electric only, we do not, so we still give property owners that option to do gas, but the code essentially says that you got to put both connections in there. So a great example is a dryer. Some folks, like myself, we prefer a gas dryer, others prefer an electrical dryer. Even though you opt to do a gas dryer, you got to put in the electric plug there, even though it just sits there empty. And again, these are for new builds. That is applicable, it doesn't go backwards. One of the, the bottom two are kind of the two bigger bites of the apple. The California Building Code includes now a chapter called the Wildland Urban Interface. This is standards for structures for fire-prone areas. So if you recall, during the summer, we went through, during the beginning of the summer, we did adoption for very high fire severity zone maps. So that's where now this comes into play, is that wooey chapter for those properties that are in that very high and very high fire, high and very high fire severity zones. And then there's actually a new chapter as well. It's called the Existing Building Code. This is, this is again, a brand-new chapter, and it provides for more flexibility with multiple compliance paths for adaptive reuse. And actually, this is pretty, this is pretty great for Solvang as we're trying to get development to do infill... get development to do infill development, adaptive reuse. So this code really does come into play for existing structures that want to change occupancies. A great example of that is going from a commercial to a residential occupancy. So there's one last section of the code is the California Fire Code. So Santa Barbara County takes responsibility for adoption of any local amendments to our fire code, as we are part of the County Fire District. On November 18th, 2025, the County Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance and local amendments, and that is reflected in your resolutions this evening. So the city's ordinance 25035, in turn, adopts the county's fire ordinance, including the county's local amendments. And so we did include findings in support of the county's local amendments to the California Fire Code, which are included in Resolution 251304, as well as amendments to our wooey chapter, which are codified as a part of the proposed ordinance. So we do have Stephanie Spilder, our chief building official, who works under contract is with us this evening for technical questions. But with that, I'll open up to any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions on this? No questions? Okay. Well, I will open it up to public comment. If there are anybody here that has any public comments or anybody on Zoom. Okay. We will now close public comment, seeing as there is none. And bring it back to council for discussion. Are you asking for, this is a reading, public hearing, what's the action item to be had?
The action is to adopt the item. So it takes into effect by January 1st.
Okay.
And just to clarify, you need to do, there's three things that are going to be part of the motion. One is to adopt the ordinance, and then there's two resolutions to adopt as well.
Okay. Any motions?
All right. I will make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council setting forth findings in support of amendments for the above referenced codes. That would be, yeah, Title 10 of the Solvang Municipal Code. An adoption of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Solvang to ratify the ordinance of Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara, adopting and amending the 2025 California Fire Code. And then did I mention that we are, I'm also making a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Title 10 of the Solvang Municipal Code? Does that cover that?
Yeah, the findings resolution would be the last one.
You've got, you did the ordinance and the ratification resolution. You just need to add adopt the findings resolution, I think.
Yes. So I'll add to my motion to adopt a resolution of the findings in support of the amendments of the codes that are referenced.
Thank you. Second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you modify it, I'll be really mad.
Okay. And if, if you want to, basically, the motion was all of 7A on the agenda. Is that correct?
You're going to make me repeat it.
No. Is that, is that? Okay, I think we got it. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay. Item 8A.
A matter of formality, sorry. Could you just close the public hearing on that? Because that was actually a public hearing item. Okay, thanks.
I opened it and I closed it.
Yeah, he did.
Yes. Appointment to fill vacancy on Revenue Measures Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I will provide the staff report in one moment, just getting, scrolling through the building code section. That's not where I need to be. Apologies.
Page 88.
88, thank you. So this matter has been before you once previously, but we've now brought it back. As you all know, on August 20th, 2025, Armoc member Jamie Baker resigned, which created a vacancy. The, based on the municipal code, staff determined that the person who should fill this vacancy on the council is member Louise Smith, because she's the only sitting council member who has not yet appointed a member to Armoc. And so Councilmember Smith has now had the opportunity to review the two applications, I believe, that have been submitted for the appointment. And the action tonight would actually just be for member Smith to make the appointment based on the current code provisions. The council does not need to ratify her appointment decision. She just needs to tell staff during the meeting what appointment, which candidate she selects.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Smith, are you prepared to put forth an individual?
Absolutely.
And we do need to take public comment.
We will, but I want to get the person in the record as to who you'd like to choose.
Do I make the, do I just tell you who it is now, or can I talk about?
Well, you can do either one. Before I open it for public comment, who are we going to talk about?
Okay, yeah. I mean, I like to.
That's kind of where I was going with it.
Okay. Ba ba. So, so I just want to say I'm sorry that neither of the applicants are here to speak this, this evening. But I did reach out to, there were two, I reached out to both of them via email to meet with me individually, which I did on two separate occasions. And I just wanted to sort of get to know who they were and where they stand, just to get to know them a little bit better, and what their understanding of what the committee is all about, and what the responsibilities are, and if they had any questions for me or how it all works together. So I want to thank both applicants. I mean, I really appreciate them spending the time and their, I mean, commitment to Very qualified, both of them. They have lived in the area for a long time. They are committed to solving. They're committed to what happens in this community, and I appreciate that. So it was a very, it was, it was, it was a difficult decision to make. And I really wish there was only one applicant, so I didn't have to make a decision, but I had to. They volunteer a lot. They, they come to city council meetings. They're part of so many different aspects of the community. But drumroll, please. It was a tough decision to make, but after very careful consideration and a lot of commitment to this and trying to make the best decision, I feel, for the community, I have made a choice, and it is for Phyllis Martina.
Do we have any public comment on this appointment, proposed appointment? Anybody on Zoom? No? Then I will close. Madam Attorney, I am closing public comment. And move it back to the council. Now, we, we don't have to ratify this, but congratulations to Phyllis Martina. And we look forward to her joining the Armoc team and her efforts on behalf of the city council. Thank you very much. Also, please thank the other candidate on our behalf for volunteering, stepping up and putting their name in the hopper. Yes, Ms. Smith?
I want to point out, we're attempting to have our next Armoc meeting on December 5th, so we will notify the new committee member because we need her for a quorum. Two of the four existing, we're unable to meet on the 5th. We're trying to get a little head start on the budget process, so we will reach out to her. If she's unable to do that, we'll have to reschedule. But just put that out there in the, in the world so that hopefully the little birdies talk to her.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Smith, for doing that. Okay, we'll go to item 8B. Should we read that into the record, please?
San Inez Valley SYB Regional Community Connector Project River Trail Funding Request.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Good evening, council. I'm here to present the San Inez Valley Regional Community Connector Project, fondly known as the River Trail Funding Request from the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. Tonight, we have Michael Becker with us that will do a short presentation about the project itself, but I'll give you a brief overview. We were, we contributed last year to a grant that was ultimately received by the San Inez Band of Chumash Indians to continue the River Trail project and do 30% design for several segments, finishing 100% design for Buellton. And overall, the, the project is just over a million dollars. That will be put towards the, the project itself. Solvang's $30,000 request would be approximately 2% of that overall project cost. And what we would receive from that, from the, would be basically a lot of public outreach and community engagement to ultimately identify a path, a primary path through Solvang for 30% design. And this would be part of one of six segments in the overall project that is, stretches from Camp Four to Buellton. And it's been listed in several reports over the years, over the last 20 years, really, in various ways. It's also in the city's active transportation plan, and so we're excited about this. And I will turn it over to Michael Becker to do his presentation.
Do I get a clicker, or do I just say next slide? Yeah. There we go.
He's the clicker.
Okay. Clicking. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Bridgette, Mayor Brown, council members. My name is Mike Becker. I'm the Director of Planning at Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, or SB CAG, which Mayor Brown serves on and former Mayor Infante previously served on. So I'm here to discuss a bit about the, I call it the River Trail. It's gone by various names throughout the years. As Bridgette mentioned, I think it's the Regional Active Transportation Connector. River Trail is much easier. It speaks, no matter what you hear, it's the same project. So tonight, I just wanted to talk about what is this idea of a trail across the valley? Where did it come from? What has happened to get us here? Then we recently were successful with a couple of grand awards, and I'll talk about what we're going to go into next and the schedule for that, as well as the budget. It's a fairly brief presentation, so give me a couple of minutes to get through it. But really, the idea here is, as Bridgette mentioned, to connect across the 246 corridor from Western Buellton, Riverview Park in Buellton, to the future Camp Four development of the tribe out past the roundabout. And what's that for? It's to provide a connection that's not Highway 246 to get across the valley, but it's also, people can use it for transportation. People can use it for recreation or also tourism. And just anecdotally, it's probably about 10 years ago now, but we went and stayed at Flying Flags for my daughter's birthday one year. I noticed, I said, was there about 200 RV spaces here? Every single one of them has bicycles with them, and I bet you every single one of them comes into Solvang during their stay. Wouldn't it be nice if they were actually able to use their bicycles to come here and not clog up 246 or take your parking spots? So we have, as Bridgette mentioned, there's six segments. And if you just assume that they're numbered one through six, starting with the left, the segment within the city of Buellton is fairly well defined. The city of Buellton has been advancing this project for a long period of time, so they have easements or agreements for easements. So to run along the, from Riverview Park along the north side of the river to Avenue of Flags, and then we're looking for a connection under Highway 101 that would connect to eastern Buellton. And then the second box there, that one is, it's largely across private properties on the south side of the river. And there's been discussions with a variety of landowners across there, and the county is currently in the process of developing a recreation master plan. And the one thing that the recreation master plan will do is it'll enable the negotiation of easements for concessions from the county. So essentially, if a landowner were to provide a trail easement, the county would perhaps have some land use regulation concessions for, for that landowner. So the alignment in that box number two is not yet known. I want to skip over Solvang for a second, and then we get into what would be box four, the first dashed one. That's the existing path that runs along 246. So no changes there. Really, what we want to do is connect to both ends of it. And you're aware that Caltrans has a project to replace that Alamo-Pintado Creek Bridge over 246. And as part of Caltrans' work of doing that, along with the city of Solvang's contribution, is to extend that existing bike path out to Alamo-Pintado, so it doesn't start at almost Alamo-Pintado. It goes from Alamo-Pintado to the high school. And then the box five would be from Fuia Road down to Edison. There, we're fairly geographically constrained, so really, you're looking at one alternative there, and that's alongside and on the north side of Highway 246, of creating a class one path along there. And then, once we get into that last box six, the blue dashed one, the tribe owns the vast majority of that land. So really, the only question there is, do we stay in Caltrans right away, or do we go into the tribe's land? So then, back to Solvang. So the, really, the concept is there's two ends. And we also know that we have the piece that runs along 246 from Alamo-Pintado to the high school. Everything else is up in the air. And it's through this process that we're about to begin that will determine what that line's going to look like, including through Solvang. So as Bridgette mentioned, we're going to, there will be a lot of engagement throughout this. We'll be coming to the council, we'll be meeting with residents, stakeholder groups, to determine what is the, the alignment of a future trail that works. And there'll be some point in time when we come back to this council and ask you to say, yes, that's the line that we'd like you to move forward with. We're not there yet. We want this process to play out. I have no preconceived notions. I just know what the two endpoints are and how we connect them. We'll learn that over the next year or so. So that's, to get across Solvang, there's many different options. But really, the idea for the path is you have, you can see on the left, both of these shots are from, there's a bike path that runs along the Ventura River from Ventura to Ojai. And you can see the photo on the left, it accommodates equestrians, so you have roughly eight-foot strip of asphalt, split rail fence, equestrian trail on the other side. And then, once you're closer to Ojai, you have the, you could see the photo on the right. And really, what this highlights is, it doesn't have to just be a strip of asphalt that runs through a field. It could be something attractive. It can be a resource for the community. It could be something that you're proud of. A way to showcase your city and to get people excited about getting a little bit of time outside and breathing fresh air. All right. So Bridgette also mentioned that this has been going on for a long time. I was talking with Mike Hacker, and I think he said he first started talking about this in 1998. I wasn't around here then, but it first came under my radar in 2014, as I was developing the Regional Active Transportation Plan. And that was, the state changed the way it funds bicycle projects through the Active Transportation Program, which required us to develop an active transportation plan. But that's where this first came on the SB CAG's radar. And while we didn't know anything about it, we said, well, let's put it, we'll call it a study corridor nerd. So just, we recognized that there's this desire to, for a trail across the valley, but we really don't know much about it at this point, so we're just going to say it's a study corridor, and we've been doing a whole lot of studying since then. But it's also, it's been referenced in the San Inez Valley Community Plan. It's been in Buellton's general plan since 2005. Next slide. For some reason, I repeated that upper left box. But in 2019, at the request of the City of Solvang, we developed the San Inez Valley Bicycle Master Plan. And this project, a trail across the valley, was by far the number one highest priority project amongst, that came out of that plan. Following that, we funded a project called the San Inez River Trail Alignment Study. And really, what that was, was just an environmental prescreening of some of the alternatives, so that we know what we might encounter once we get into where we're going now. And then finally, just recently, the city adopted an active transportation plan. Transportation Plan. And in that, it offered a couple of different alternatives for getting across the city. Next slide. So, we did a whole lot of planning, and then, we started moving into, we need to be able to, to take this to the next step. And to do that, we needed money. So, twice, we applied for state grant funds through the Active Transportation Program, and both times, we were not successful, though I think the second time, we were pretty close. We have applied twice for Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant application through their program. The one, the most recent one was successful, which is part of our budget. The tribe applied for a federal Active Transportation Infrastructure and Implementation Program. It was a $1.4 million. It was successful. However, the changing priorities of USDOT have put that grant in limbo, and we're not quite sure what's going to happen. We have a meeting with Federal Highways on December 4th, so hopefully, that provides some level of clarity. And then, the county has its Active Transportation Plan, which identifies a project of the Buellton to Solvang segment. And then, the counties, as I mentioned previously, the county is in the process of creating a Recreation Master Plan. And included in that, we're joining an environmental document, is the segment from Buellton to Solvang. So, that will be covered environmentally through what the county is doing, at least on a programmatic level. So, I mentioned, we've been doing a whole lot of planning. That's what we were able to keep doing, and keep applying for grants. And then, finally, we did get some. Meanwhile, the city of Buellton, unbeknownst to the rest of us, had, was able to, to get a state earmark through Assembly Member Hart, and it's being administered by the California State Parks. So, that is $425,000. And that's why, what we're going to do is a little bit different for Buellton, because it's a different color of money with a different allowable uses and so forth. So, then, we have what Bridgette mentioned, where the city had contributed to the Chumash's Caltrans grant. That was $383,000, and that was successful. And then, the Chumash tribe's federal grant, which is $1.4 million. And we don't know yet what's going to come of it. But if you go next slide, okay. I'll circle back. The, so where are we going? Today was the deadline to submit proposals for this project. So, we circulated a request for proposals, which identified what we wanted to do in terms of the planning process, to engage the community, to determine what is the alignment that works. We wanted to, so, the goal is, during the SB CAG Board of Directors meeting in January, we'll be approving an agreement with the contractor, which will in turn be able to get the project rolling. We will, within the city of Buellton, we'll do 100% environmental. Outside of Buellton, there's no environmental unless the, the tribe's federal grant comes through. But within the city of Buellton, we're going to do 100% engineering and design. Therefore, they'll be construction-ready. All they need is just the funds to, to start building. Outside of the city of Buellton, we'll go to 30% design, which is conceptual, which is the one benefit of that, is we could start to see what this might look like. But also, more importantly, is we could see, how much is this going to cost to implement? Because we don't want to be applying for construction grant funds without knowing. We don't want to under-ask, and then, come to a point where we're 75% done building something and run out of money. So, it will enable us to determine what, how much money will this thing cost to build. Within the city of Buellton, it's 100%, so we'll be construction-ready. And if the federal, the tribe's federal grant comes through, we'll do environmental and 100% design across the corridor. That's the missing piece of the funding there, and hopefully, it comes through. So, here's the schedule and budget. So, to this point, we're just rolling from Q2 to Q3, where we developed a request for proposals, advertised it, and we're going to be working to hire a consultant to get the project started. We anticipate it'll take about two years once we get started. And you can see, the budget that we have is about $1.2 million, and that's not counting the $1.4 million that may potentially come from the tribe's grant. But there's the contributions of where they came in. So, the city of Buellton is giving up its $425,000 earmark. The county of Santa Barbara, through Supervisor Hartman's office, has given us a cash match of $376,000. And then, we have the, the tribe's Caltrans grant, which is $383,000. And I understand that the city, as well as Buellton and the county, all contribute towards the development of that application. But today, we're here to ask for $30,000 from the city of Solvang to help support the effort. It gives you skin in the game. And also, to, just to ask that, to be part of this process as we go through it, to help, we, we don't want to step on toes. We want to learn from the community, and see what works best. But ideally, we want to connect those two end dots. And that has to happen somehow. So, we will be back at some point in the future, asking you for your input on the alignment, and to, an alignment that the council can support. With that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Infante?
Yeah. So, this has come up several times, obviously. It's been discussed a lot of times. One of the things that occurs to me, we came up with a while back, that you showed a picture of eight, eight feet of pavement, and what looked like about four feet of horse path. So, you've got a total of 12. If you can get a 12-foot path, that's what emergency vehicles require. So, this, it would seem to me, if you can get 12 feet of open path, paved, presumably, you get Caltrans, because now you can get fire, police, medical, anything you need into a lot of areas, that it's very difficult to get to right now. So, it would seem to me, that would be a good way to tickle Caltrans' favor. Biggest question I have is Solvang. Oh, that's no big surprise. Because there's not any real open area, so all of the path would have to go onto city streets somehow.
Sorry, I forgot to turn my microphone. Thank you. The, the comment was, in Solvang, any path that comes through Solvang has to go through city streets. So, the cost to Solvang is going to be widening the streets, painting the lines, doing all of those things to make it appropriate for the path to come through the city. That's what I'm very curious to see, what your consultants will come up with as an idea of coming through the city. Because the 30,000 is nice, but it's going to cost a bloody fortune to do that and get the path through the city.
Yeah. Councilmember Infante, the one thing, the, within parts, especially parts of the city of Solvang, it may just be that the local road network is suffice, that nothing needs done. That if, you know, say for a connection from, along Alisal, you don't have to build a path. You have sidewalks, there's bike lanes. That that's sufficient to make a, a certain part of the connection. It's where you don't have that, where you may want to put a path. Like, for instance, if you were to go from Alisal to Alamo-Pintado, cutting behind the Mission, then you're, you're looking at a path. But if it's just using Alisal, perhaps that segment, the city street is sufficient, and nothing else is needed. But I do, I don't want to put words in Mayor Brown's mouth, but I know you and I have talked before, and the one thing was, and emergency evacuation route from the city of Solvang. And as you mentioned, the emergency vehicles, perhaps, it is an opportunity, and we can see as we go through this process, could a portion of a future path also be an emergency evacuation route if needed?
Right.
And I think a lot of that depends on how we end up connecting to the city. And a lot of that depends on negotiations with landowners that are not in the city, of kind of, how can we touch the city with a path?
I agree. Thank you.
My question has to do with how the funding is used. But heading in that direction, do you have any insights or learnings from the rejected grant applications? What were, what were our, what was, what was the reason for lack of award?
Very good question, Councilmember Rona. So, for why they're rejected, I think for the state grants, being, the State Active Transportation Program, which is where the, the big money is, in terms of when we want to build this, where, that's where we'd be seeking funds. I think, first off, the valley is at a disadvantage in the program, because it doesn't have sufficient disadvantaged communities, which, it's not a disadvantage. But the program favors areas with a lot of disadvantage in their population. And secondly, I think we were probably not successful through that program, because within the applications, it probably showed we weren't ready. That we needed to, to go through this process, like, we're going to, about ready to start, to make sure that we're ready. And I think by the time that this project is over, we will have checked every single box necessary to get funded.
The 30, when you go back to the slide, the yellow slide, with the spread of all the contributions that we have so far, less the 1.4 from the tribe, it looks like 30,000 is a really easy ask. But it's certainly out of skew with what the other contributors are, are funding or contributing to the project. So, you said kind of the magical question, and you said the magical answer is, we don't know how much this is going to cost us yet. So, how will we have confidence putting our first, taking the first step down this path, trail, if you will, at 30,000? How do we know what we're ultimately signing up for in terms of cost?
It's a, another good question. And the future of this trail, like, SB CAG will not build the trail. So, we're going to manage the, this process, and perhaps, we end up managing a construction of a trail in the future. But it's not, it's not going to be our board saying, okay, just get money out of SB CAG to build this trail. So, it'll ultimately come down to a decision in the council. And the likely, what I would see as the most likely path or trail, is to, following this, we'll know what the need is in terms of what's the cost to construct, and do we need to segment it, because it's too expensive to go for it all in one cycle. And I think there'll be a question that comes to the council at some point, saying, would you provide a match to this grant? And we don't know what that would be yet. And the council can always say, no, we just want to try it without a match. But I think with a match, it makes a application more success, or more likely to be successful. But at this point, there's no obligation beyond what we're asking today.
And is there segmentation to the budgets, or the grants, and the funding we've already secured? So, I'll take the tribe. Let's say they are, their federal funding comes through, and they have $1.4 million. Is that money segmented to the box and the boundary in their map, or can it be spread across the entire project?
It could be spread across the, the entire project.
And who will make those determinations?
So, when that application went in, so the, the Caltrans grant and the federal grant were both submitted by the tribe, and awarded to the tribe. And they were applying on behalf of the valley jurisdictions for the full length of the project. The only money that we have that is restricted is the Buellton earmark, because it was given to the city of Buellton. So, that's, part has to stay in there. The rest of it is from Camp Four to Buellton.
I'm done with my money questions. I might have another one, because I just want to check my notes really quick. But I'll give time to everybody else.
Let you find out. Any other questions? I had a, I had a quick question. You'd mentioned that you have easements or opportunities for land on the south side of the river. That, that will determine where you, where you start from Solvang, because if you're on the south side, there's no bridge until you get to Alisal.
Right.
Okay. So, we're not worried about the north side of Solvang. I, you're not going to put in a new bridge, I suspect.
Now, the, on the south side of the river, there's four primary landowners, across from 101, or Santa Rosa Road, to Alisal. There's four people on that land, plus the one, the horse farm is the fifth. But you'd go around the horse farm. Three of the four are supportive of a trail, and are willing to work through the county's rec master plan for concessions and trade, for easements. That gets us, the, there is a possibility that we're crossing at the Arizona Crossing then.
I'm sorry.
We're crossing the river at the Arizona Crossing, because we can't get the Hawaii to Alisal. So, then, that puts us in the spot where, then, do you stay adjacent to the river on the north side, and where does that hit Solvang? Or do you have to go out to 246, and alongside 246? I think, these are all questions that will get answered through this process. But yeah, there's, we need willing landowners. And then, on top of that, how the willing landowners line up with where that would approach Solvang. Then, we need your support, too, to...
But where, where are you crossing the bridge in, are you, from the 101? How are you, or, or Flags, Avenue of Flags, from the park to the south side? You still got to cross the river just to get to the south side.
So, you'd cross...
Then, you need to cross it again to get on the north side. But are, have you also looked at properties on the north side of the river to, for equal easements, or?
Yeah. So, we have a person who's working with us, who's accounting planning commissioner, who has relationships with a lot of landowners, who's helping explore some of those. But in theory, if you start at Riverview Park in Buellton, which is on the north side of the river, the trail would go along the north side of the river, and you'd eventually run into Avenue of Flags. And if you wanted to continue along to Solvang, you'd cross, it would just be, as I always mention, sometimes, you just use streets. It'd be crossing the Avenue of Flags Bridge over the river, to the Santa Rosa Interchange, where then, the path would pick up again. The county does have it on its bridge list to replace that bridge. So, it's kind of not ideal right now, but we also know that that bridge is going to be replaced in the future. This Avenue of Flags Bridge, if you're familiar with it, has narrow lanes and no shoulders. So, it's not ideal, but it gets you to the south side of the river. Eventually, that bridge will be replaced. And if we do need to cross back to the north side, there's the Arizona Crossing, which is about halfway between Buellton and Solvang. It gets you back to the north side. The water, the low-water crossing, yeah.
At Highland Adventure Park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. I had another question on that. The, does this, does, because it's, what, not, not automotive traffic, bike traffic, there's, are there funds in our account for multimodal credits, or things of that nature, that, from SCAG?
From SB CAG. Bridgette could probably speak to this better, but in terms of the maintenance of effort for alternative transportation, if the contribution you provided to this project came out of Measure A, I imagine it would help you towards your maintenance of effort.
Okay.
I just have one more question, which is, and I, I may have missed this in your presentation, so forgive me, but the, our packet clearly states that this design portion that we would be funding tonight is 30% of the design. So, how do we come up with that 30% if kind of the total is TBD?
We came up with 30% because that is the limitation of the funding source, that is going to pay for the bulk of it. So, the, the Caltrans grant that was awarded to the tribe for the trail, only allows up to 30% design. So, that's our limitation to stop at 30% outside of Buellton. And then, if the federal grant comes through, then we would have a more flexible funding source that would enable us to go to 100% across the corridor.
How do we, at that, that sounds arbitrary to me, but I'm sure you guys know more. How do we know we're getting an outcome that's going to be useful at that 30% number?
I think if we can identify the constraints along the corridor, and the improvements necessary to, to get past those constraints, then we'll be able to come up with cost estimates to deliver the project. And I think if we can develop reasonable cost estimates off of 30% design, then it's a cheap, a cheap... then it's a cheap, it's objective. And I know Bridgette's about ready.
Yeah, I did, I did want to add that when you guys mentioned the cost, that the 30% design would have a conceptual estimate for construction based on the plans and the alignment that is chosen. And so it's 30% design. You know, you go to 100% design before you go out to construction. But at that point, you've really kind of fleshed out a lot. It's a matter of, but it's a matter of Solvang having the will to pick an alignment, like to commit to an alignment so that we can move it to that 30%. Once we have that 30%, we'll be in a good position to receive more grant funding and also to just make some more educated choices about how we would proceed with the project itself, if that makes sense.
It does. But I, part of this exercise is a large, was mentioned, a pretty big public, public set of input, right?
Yes.
Some feedback and interaction, collaboration. So it sounds like, I mean, just to be transparent, it sounds like a low cost for a large amount of work and for a really impactful kind of first step. Is that, that's how I'm interpreting it.
Right, well, you're benefiting from a lot of grants.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Thank you. Is there anybody in the room that would like to? Mr. Beebe, please. Anybody else? Mike, you're on deck.
Mayor Dennis Beebe, solving. Sometimes you focus on the construction costs and you estimate it, you know, at some point. And gee, it never, it never goes down as your, as your design gets more and more refined. But I'm, my question is, who maintains it? Because you can't dole out the maintenance to 10 different property owners. It's got to be a consistent standard that's maintained. So I'm just curious as to what the long-term maintenance costs are and who, who funds those.
Thank you. Mike, you wanted? Please, for the record, introduce yourself. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Mike Hecker. I am a lifelong San Ynez Valley resident and a lifelong bicycle rider. I have traveled the United States racing bicycles, promoting bicycle racing, working as an operations manager at bicycle races. And today, I'm currently one of several nationally recognized bike race announcers. I get paid to fly around the United States and talk about bicycle racing. You know what I see whenever I go to these places? Awesome, beautiful bike paths with families and tourists and all sorts of people enjoying them, walking on them, running on them, skateboarding on them, equestrians riding alongside of them. They're all coexisting, and they're having a happy life enjoying their bike path. Corey Evans and I, right there, owner of Dr. J's, in 1998, we're hanging out in his shop going, you know what this valley needs? It really needs a bike path. We need to get more kids riding bikes. And the reason we don't have more kids riding bikes in the San Ynez Valley is because we do not have the infrastructure. We're standing here in Solvang, California, the supposed Danish capital of America. Here's some stats for you from Denmark. 70% of the population own bicycles. 21% ride their bike every week. Or I'm sorry, every day, every day. Bicycle ownership, cycling frequency in Copenhagen, 50% of the trips. This is your sister city. 50% of daily trips are on bicycle. City of Solvang, embrace the bicycle. Be more like Denmark. Please, give us 30,000 bucks to help out Mr. Becker and all the hardworking people at SB CAG as let's stop 30 years of just chapp, 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 chapp. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Let's go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, if there's no one else, I will close the public comment session. Huh?
Comment.
Comment? Public comment? And then bring it back to discussion for the board. I had a question for the city manager. Is there a budget issue with this? Is this already planned into our budget?
No, it was not included in the budget. That's one of the reasons why we're here before you tonight. That's, I spoke with Wendy, the Administrative Services Director, before the meeting. She said there is adequate funding in the Transportation Fund as well as potentially in the General Fund. Right now, we're asking a commitment from council, not unlike what we did with the pool at the last meeting, where when we come back with our mid-year budget adjustments, we will allocate it appropriately. But there is funding available.
Thank you. Any questions?
Should we ask Buellton to match our commitment?
They might ask us to match theirs.
They haven't, they haven't had their meeting yet, but I spoke to the mayor at that REACH event that our mayor mentioned a moment ago. And they did talk about it and bring it back at their meeting in December. So although it's not been formal yet, it sounds like that's a yes.
Thank you. Okay. I think if we're ready, let's either propose a motion or any volunteers?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget adjustment for the $30,000 to initiate the design project.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval of the funding required for SYV Regional Community Connector Project River Trail Funding Request. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Invonte.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. And... And we're going on, moving on to our item 8C, as in Charlie, Urban Growth Boundary Direction to Staff. That's, I'm sorry, did you want to read that for us? I already did. Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So before you this evening, we're going to have a discussion about the UGB, or the Urban Growth Boundary. So just to give a brief background of that, the Urban Growth Boundary was initiative that was adopted by the city council versus putting the initiative on the November 2020 ballot. The city updated its general plan and land use element after that. However, there was no implementation of the Urban Growth Boundary included, which basically is, we have a couple policies that refer back.
Pardon me. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could we close that door or ask them to keep it down? They're celebrating a victory. And, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Raphael.
That's okay.
Please.
So again, the city had updated its general plan and land use element. We went through a quite intensive, multi-year update of that. However, as a part of the land use element that was adopted, it references back out the Urban Growth Boundary Initiative, but there's sort of no implementation policies that are listed in there. And then additionally speaking, there is no codification of implementation of the initiative itself in our municipal code. So with that, on March 10th of this past year, we had a city council meeting, which had a discussion regarding the Urban Growth Boundary, along with some other items, including infrastructure, which revolved around water resiliency and transportation, particularly ingress and egress out of the city. Since that time, you directed city staff to go ahead and do more research on this and bring this item back. And so since that time, we have met with various groups to discuss the Urban Growth Boundary. So that includes, we met with LAFCO. We met with the Save Our Solvang Group. That was the folks behind the background of the initiative. And we've also met with some various property owners. So just to give an idea of what is the Urban Growth Boundary from a visual perspective, on your screen is an aerial of the city. The area that's dashed in black and blue is the city limit, and that's actually considered the Urban Growth Boundary. Aside from that, there's also a line that's called the Sphere of Influence, or SOI. That's in the lighter blue. So that lighter blue area sort of extends out to the east, more towards San Yenés. And there's just a little portion on the west portion, on the west side of the city. So the justipus of the last time we discussed this was sort of, you know, what is the Urban Growth Boundary? And how do we go about potentially looking to potentially amend it, repeal it, et cetera? So there are sort of three ways to sort of amend the Urban Growth Boundary. Again, this was a part of the initiative. The first one is with the vote of residents. Pretty simplistic. Someone brings forth a project before the city. We process it. We go through the lengthy aspect of not only processing an application, but also doing environmental review, public hearings, et cetera. And it essentially goes before this body. If the body, you know, potentially passes it, then we have to take it to a vote to ultimately approve it. So that's sort of one way of looking at it. The other one is amendments. There are two various amendments we can do. Is if its amendment is necessary to comply with state or federal law regarding the provisions of housing and permits no greater density than is necessary to accommodate the required housing. And then the last one is land contemplated for construction of public schools or for public services and facilities. So the last one, you know, again, the schools, that's mainly an issue with working with our local school districts. The other one is public services and facilities while not defined in the Urban Growth Boundary. So we'd have to sort of define what that actually is. It's a little bit loosey-goosey. The bigger, the one is, the issue is really the middle one, is having, being compelled to comply with state or federal laws. And there's little nuances that basically there have been the growth boundary didn't necessarily discuss. And so, and these are these nuances that is before you. So first off, you know, we had housing element rezones. We approved our housing element, albeit a little bit late. However, it was a grind. Let's be truthfully honest. No one likes to increase densities in their backyards. It's really hard. And we are now on the cusp of 2026. The next thing you know is our 2031 housing element cycle is going to kick right off here in about mid, mid 2029, early 2029. So as stated in the last slide, it's if we're compelled to, if we're told by the state or federal government to accommodate density, then we can do the annex. However, state or federal government's never going to compel us to do anything. That's simply, they can't compel us. You know, if we want to live in our boundary, we live in our boundary. No, no problem. So essentially, that puts the middle amendment out the door. Because essentially, what's going to end up happening is we can only rezone within our current boundary. And so if we go to the next arena cycle, and we'll have the same issues that we already faced before, is we're looking inside. That means increased densities. That means additional rezones. That means potentially height needs to come back on the table in terms of going beyond 35 feet to accommodate those densities. The state just says, cool, go, go do it. But we can't tell the state, you know what? On second thought, we don't want to do those things. So we're going to, we're thinking about annexing land to the west or east of us. We'll eventually get there, but we, you know, we're thinking about it, so please count it. The state won't count it. And we'll tell you, go, go do the above. And again, as we've learned from the last go-around, it is, it really, it pits neighbor against neighbor. Because essentially, you have a set of neighbors who don't want density, and you have a set of residents who do want it because they want housing. And it's ugly. It's not fun. It's not great. Additionally, we do have a limited amount of vacant land, which again, as I mentioned, creates that tension. And as for the last go-around, there's always mention of certain open space slots that the city owns. And why don't you put housing there? Well, the state really loves to, the state of California says, you know, cities, go do that. However, there's a little caveat to that. In order for you to do that, you need to have someone lined up to actually build there, and you just can't count it. So lining up that partner and lining up those surplus lands is a little bit more troublesome and cumbersome, and it may not be to fruition. So again, knowing all that, we're boxed into the same thing. Increased infill density, more by right development. So what that means is, are currently, we have a very robust public participation process when it comes to development. The state's really pushing away from that to make it more by right. So by right simply means submit for a building permit application. I don't need to notify anybody in terms of neighbors or anyone. And the next year, only notification is the sticks that go in the ground, and you're asking, well, what the heck's going on here? So knowing all that, and annexations and sphere of influences are governed not by the city, but they're actually governed by what's called LAFCO, Local Area Formation Committee. And that's per county. So Santa Barbara County LAFCO is ours. And Santa Barbara County LAFCO recently undertook what's called an MSR review. That's Municipal Services Review. So they basically went through the county. They went, looked at all the existing cities, all the existing other government functioning agencies and organizations, such as school districts, vector control, flood control, you name it, cemetery districts. And they basically reviewed the existing spheres, you know, what, how many employees they have, budgets, et cetera. And they make recommendations. Do we want to expand? Do we want to contract, et cetera? So this last go-around of the Municipal Service Review, they contacted city staff to go over our existing boundary, our existing sphere, what are our challenges? What's facing us? What's going on in terms of our budget? What's going on in the future? And they came back and solidified and says, you know, the city of Solvang, it's fine the way your boundaries are in terms of both city limit and the sphere of influence, but there was one caveat to that. They did recommend providing, they did recommend to the city that we evaluate potential future annexations and allow. And so essentially, this potentially would allow for a careful evaluation of, do we want to potentially go down that road to potentially annex for various reasons? And not just for housing. There are multiple reasons to annex properties. One is water resiliency, as mentioned earlier. And in March, the other one is for ingress and egress of transportation. The third one is economic development. You know, we, as many of you know, we rely heavily on TOT and sales tax. So diversification of our economy is pretty key. Having land to do that means a lot. The third one is simply implementation of our policies and goals. Some of those, especially when you look at annexation, if you do a plan, you can implement things like green belts and implement those and put those in perpetuity. So there is many tools that are out there that are available in the annexation portion. And as, and many folks do not understand that annexations just aren't a vote of the council and go. They're very extremely complicated processes that take about three to four years to complete. It takes a while. It takes an application. It takes us to review. It takes an actual plan. That's what planners do. We don't just push around paper. Some of us do like actually going through the motions of creating specific plans or master plans to show how future growth and development go. And then there's the actual issue of negotiation with Santa Barbara County. Because you have to remember that Santa Barbara County, these are unincorporated properties, so they're not just going to give up their property taxes willy-nilly. So there comes a negotiation with that. It's a very elongated process. And it's just, it's not as simplistic as one thinks. So knowing all this, that we have, you know, we're basically about the midpoint of our housing element, knowing the trials and tribulations we went through the last go-around, city staff is actually recommending that we form an Urban Boundary Exploration Committee, an UBECK, rather than pursuing an Urban Grou, UGB amendment or revocation at this time. This committee would include approximately 12 persons from diverse community representation, including the city council and planning commission, members of the school district, property owners, real estate professionals, community groups, and service organizations. And the point of this is to essentially run a deep dive. And these would be open public hearings. We can broadcast these online, have public comment. Essentially, consider these about four to six mini hour and a half, two-hour lectures and dissertations and reflective of questions, comments, and come back. And we do a series of these. We go over what is, again, the sphere of influence? What are the options? What are the options to infill? What are, you know, why should we explore going in and out? And essentially, coming back to the city council within six months with sort of a report out. And from that six months, this council can then take a pause and figure out what direction it wants to be in. And from that six months, this council can then take a pause and figure out what direction it wants to be in. It's responsible and it allows for that public communication and dialogue in a much more succinct fashion. So I know that's a lot to digest. So from that, I'll open up to questions from the council.
Thank you. Any questions?
Um.
Smith?
I just want some clarification. Maybe I missed something, but the light blue outline to the east. How did we come up with that?
It's been in the sphere for quite a bit of time. You know, when you look back of the founding of Solvang, Solvang used to be a lot bigger in terms of area. It's been slowly whittled away. But really it was, when you look at it from a sort of historical standpoint, the thinking was that eventually the city would annex to the east in those parcels. It just never occurred and never happened. So that's why we have that sphere of influence.
My experience with annexations is fairly limited, but because that area, that's January acres and all that area that's already urbanized. They prefer, you know, the density of the population and thing is more suitable to a city versus a county. So that's what appears most to me anyway. Most of that area is already developed. Does not really give us any new area to, you know, larger areas to develop. So that's why I'm pretty confident that's why that's in the sphere.
And just kind of to follow up, I mean, just looking at this map, it looks pretty dense. Like is there, like I guess I need to drive around to look out there. But are there areas that we could have some housing growth that's going to help us satisfy what we need to do for the state?
So again, the area in blue is called sphere of influence. It's not in the city. So we would actually have to, if the city were to, it's essentially the area that is for future growth, however, the growth's already done. So to answer your question, there's, there are some parcels, but not enough to cobble together an actual plan. And then on top of that, there's the caveat of the actual property owners that are there. So it becomes a lot, it becomes much more difficult to start annexing them because, you know, we have properties that are on septic. And then do they, are they required to connect into our sewer? Do they not have to connect? There are many more questions, which makes those type of annexations unattainable pretty much at this point in juncture. So again, this is what happens when we don't review our sphere of influence and we just let it be for quite some time, is we've essentially have lost opportunities. And this is, this is one. Again, not trying to advocate being pro-growth, but it's very much a lost opportunity for actual planning of the future.
Thank you.
I can share with you some of the things that have happened to some other folks. The city of Lompoc and the county of Santa Barbara, the county of Santa Barbara also has RENA requirements and for low income housing and so forth. And they've actually placed a development at the border of Lompoc. And now they want Lompoc to provide the services of water, power and the like after they've gleaned off all the development fees for it. So if this is their attitude and whatnot in the county, what's to keep them from putting something else on our border? And we're still paying for the services without the revenues associated with it. So, and so I look at this as a preemptive strike with the mandates from the state of California onto our community and city. And those were my thoughts on the matter. Anything else?
Yeah, quick question, Rafael. If I'm not mistaken, reading the Urban Growth Boundary Initiative, it states that it doesn't restrict us from getting property that's ag property. Is that right?
Believe so, as long as it's maintained in agriculture use. I believe that was.
Maintained for how long is agricultural use?
That's the fun part about implementation and process. And we'd have to work with Chelsea's, you know, group to figure that out. Again, I understand the premise of the urban growth boundary. Do not get, get me wrong. It is, it is there to preserve, you know, our identity. It's there to, you know, slow growth. It's there to preserve open space. That makes all sense. However, it's at this point in juncture in our political climate.
It's no open space.
It greatly limits our ability to maintain our own destiny.
Thank you.
If I understand everything you have shared, Rafael, we actually have an advantage by having the urban growth boundary defined for us or the sphere of influence defined for us. Because if we go down the path of annexation, it defines where we can accomplish that.
It does. And so as the LAFCO recommendation, as mentioned, is it, it's a window for us to explore. Because again, as we look at our sphere of influence, we've noticed that the east kind of is already, it's done. So we may need to look at other locations that provide that ability and then work with LAFCO to say, okay, we thank you for our sphere. We would like to amend our sphere of influence and potentially go in a different direction. And at their next review, that gives us the opportunity to amend our sphere, which then sets us up to go through the motions of whatever this council decides.
I think the, this is not a question, so I'm going to state, make a statement, but something that you said presumes an outcome that our only objective is housing. And so I think we do need to keep our minds open for whatever opportunities are created for the city in all of the urban boundary territory. So I don't think we're only, I think the very urgent and driving factor is affordable housing and meeting the RENA numbers. But there are other benefits that you've already pointed out, and I think we need to stay open to those.
Right. Because again, a good planning effort as far as when you were looking, when you start to grow out, there needs to be a coherent effort that is made to hit. Because you're expending monies to go out or the applicants expending monies go out. There needs to be a return and kind of understanding that the county is going to take a piece of that property tax pie. But if we can somehow negate that through economic revenue, whether it's additional TOT, whether it's additional job generation and growth, that helps to offset. And so again, that's more of a holistic look at planning. That's the way it should be done. So it's not just academic exercise, not a piece of paper, but it really looks at it at a much more different value is rather than just subset of housing.
Okay. Unless there's something else, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Anybody in the room that would like to comment on this? Anybody on Zoom? Do we have any?
Yes.
Okay. Who's this?
Susan Bott.
Susan Bott, please share with us your comments.
I am Susan Bott, one of the original organizers of the Urban Growth Boundary Campaign, Save Our Solvang. Those of us who worked hard to make the UGB a reality were concerned when we saw a possibility of repeal of the initiative on the current city council agenda. We continue to support the UGB as a means of preserving the rural nature of solving and keeping our beautiful community as it is. As we gathered signatures on a petition formulating the urban growth boundary, it became obvious that a majority of the people we contacted agreed with our campaign's goal of giving Solvang residents a vote in our city's future. We studied similar measures all over California, especially those in Buellton and Ventura, both city and county, and saw how successful these initiatives had been in putting power into the hands of the residents rather than those of a few government officials. We welcome the formation of a committee to analyze and discuss the future of our urban growth boundary as a first step in the formation of the Urban Boundary Exploration Committee. We hope that anyone chosen to serve on that committee will read the full text of the entire Urban Growth Boundary Initiative. It would be a good idea for the Solvang City Council and perhaps Planning Commission to do so as well. Please add a link to the UGB ordinance to the city's website where it is easy to find so we all can read it. Although it wasn't mentioned in the agenda, we would like members of the proposed committee to all be residents of Solvang. We would like clarification of a bit of the staff report and hope you might talk about the following sentences during council's discussion tonight. At this time, it is staff's view, number one, at this time, it is staff's view that none of the circumstances outlined in the UGB initiative allowing for amendment without a vote exist. That's on page 106 of the Agenda Packet. Second, the UGB initiative's provision allowing amendment of the UGB without a vote, if state or federal law requires the city to accommodate housing, is based on a misunderstanding of how the state or federal government can compel the city to annex property. And that's on page 107 of the Agenda Packet. We hope that great care will be taken when any changes to UGB borders are proposed and that voters will continue to be a vital part of the process. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Susan. Anybody else?
Honorable mayor and city council members, Nancy Emerson, thank you for providing participation via Zoom as I was unable to come to the meeting site tonight. I am speaking as a member of the Solvang UGB Committee's Executive Committee when it was active in 2019, 2020. Being a Solvang resident and having followed Solvang issues closely since the early 2000s, I am aware that you are examining several major issues impacting the future of Solvang. Need to diversify the tax base, water supply, tourism and its impact on traffic, parking and residence, as well as housing supply. Some are intertwined with the housing issue and questions about the possible need to expand the city limits and UGB. I support the formation of the Urban Boundary Exploration Committee. Regarding its membership, I think the city attorney should be consulted before including interested property owners outside the current sphere of influence because of their financial conflict of interest. It would be valuable for the committee to hear from them. Buellton just completed renewal of its UGB last November with an affirmative 58.87% vote with 74% of registered voters voting on the issue. Its draft UGB initially proposed expansion of its boundary to both the west and the north for new housing that might be required for the 2031 housing element. WeWatch and others recommended eliminating the west sites, which council did. The final version, which we supported, included expansion to the north to meet the potential increase in housing requirements. Having a vote on expanding boundaries in the 2026 or 2028 elections to meet potential state initiated housing requirements for the 2031 housing element should be one of the options the committee considers. Asking for a resident vote is a plausible option. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay. If there's no other public comment, I'll bring it back to closed public comment and bring it back to council. Both, both of the people wanted to see the committee formed. And one of the, I think it was Nancy that mentioned that they'd like to keep Solvang quaint and as it is. And I'm saying that so do I. That's a, that's a major, major objective. However, with the state mandates of RENA numbers, that means without equivocation, it means higher buildings and could be downtown. And it would absolutely decimate our storybook charm. And I think it would devastate the tourism aspects of it. So that's my two cents. And I would propose that council, we give direction to planning to create such a committee.
I just have one reaction also to the two public speakers. The comment was made that there was support for the formation of the UBECK committee, but that potential participants should be residents of the city of Solvang. And I would just expand that thinking slightly that there should be residents in the sphere of influence. Because that's going to be the territory that would be considered unaffected. So I think, I think that's a viable point of input, but perhaps we just alter it slightly.
If there's nothing else, do you feel that you have sufficient?
I do. I do want to make a comment though on, because again, the point of the UBECK is to not necessarily look, well, objective is do we want to grow out? That's one. But if the UBECK comes back with a potential recommendation to expand the sphere or look into expanding the sphere first, yeah, I would think that would lend to, you know, particularly affected property owners. So those are, those property owners may want to come to the table early. And so by limiting it to just property owners of the sphere, you're almost capping yourself already. Because while I understand Nancy's and Susan's comments about the property owners that gain, they have a financial gain, 100% they do. But they also, the city has a little bit of gain potentially if these property owners actually want to play ball and want to help shape a future. And if they're not a part of the table, then we might be going through.
Actually, no disagreement, Rafael, but I think there's maybe a difference between public participation and being a member of the committee.
Yes, that is, that is true.
And really the member, hopefully the committee is just going to collect all the input and all the data and come back with, here's what we learned and these are the recommendations. So.
Yeah.
We still look for more expertise on the committee or just, you know, a little more commitment to the broad swath of work, not just a stakeholder point of view.
And again, and so while the committee could be comprised of it and is public, again, I'm just looking at it from trying to get, the whole point of a committee like this is to get those different voices in. And I don't want to limit those voices. Because again, I think having more voices at the table, we tried that with the general plan. It was a little bit tougher. But I think, you know, Randy and I have kind of, obviously we will have input from Chelsea. We are starting to formulate a game plan about how to not have so many cooks in the kitchen. And so bringing those sort of cross sections as much as possible is really what I'm trying to advocate for.
Yes, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify too that we're seeking direction from you that you're comfortable with this approach generally, but the actual creation of the committee will be at the staff level and not, it's not being created by council. And that has different implications for how the body, the rules that the body is going to meet under. So I'm just wanting to point that out as a clarification that it's just going to be a staff created committee.
Not subject to Brown Act, in other words.
Yes.
So also we'd be interested to know if any of the council would be interested on being on this committee so that we can reach out.
Yeah, I would.
And we'll do the same with the planning commission and reach out. Because again, having the council and commission involved is of the utmost importance because you essentially are the decision makers. And unfortunately I have to put my professor hat on. So there's going to be a lot of lecturing, but also listening.
Thank you. Yeah, with that, we'll look forward to your next report and progress. Yeah, with that, we'll look forward to your next report and progress.
So I just want to verify that you, the direction tonight is to form the UBECK.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say without delay.
Yep.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any council closing comments or? I would like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and come out for the tree lighting and Yule Fest parade. We look forward to seeing you and having a great event this year.
Sounds great. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 8:35. Thank you.